Well, we're a little late, so I'd like to go ahead and call our August regular school board meeting to order. And I would also like to welcome everyone. And I would like to extend a special welcome to our entire administrative team at S.P. Morton. So, thank you all for coming. We have two new assistant principals, and they're off to a good start. Do we have a motion to come out of closed session?
Whereas the Franklin City School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Franklin City School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies; and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Dr. Hall-Lenard. Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to certify our closed session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Motion from closed sessions, I believe we have one.
Two.
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 Two, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion at this time to approve the personnel agenda as presented.
Thank you. Second?
A second.
You can take your pick. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Now we have a second motion from closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to amend contracted salaries for all current employees paid on the teacher salary scale for the 2017-2018 school year to reflect at least a 2% salary increase.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Now we have our roll call.
Amy Phillips.
Present.
Michelle Williams.
Present.
Ron Russett.
Robert Hope.
Present.
Dr. Andrea Hall-Lenard.
Present.
Rebecca Jester.
Present.
Jessica Grant.
Present.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Do we have any citizens' time?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
No citizens' time. Let's move into our consent agenda, and we have action to approve minutes. We have two meetings, July the 26th and August the 3rd. July 26th was our regular meeting, and July, August 3rd was a work session. I'll give you a few moments to glance at those.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the school board meeting minutes for July 26th, 2017.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the school board meeting held on August 3rd, 2017.
Thank you, Jessica. Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve the minutes for August 3rd, 2017 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Reporter of the superintendent, Ms. Sterling.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Hall. Before we get started, our first order of business is good news. He doesn't know that I'm going to invite him up, but principal from Franklin High School, Mr. Phelps, please come up and talk about your graduation today, which was absolutely wonderful.
He told me I had nothing to do tonight.
I know.
Can you believe that?
No. First of all, thank you to the school board members and superintendent and administrators and teachers who were able to come today to our summer graduation. We had two former seniors, now graduates, graduate, and they are both success stories, and they displayed grit as we talked about at our retreat all summer after being disappointed in June to come back to summer school and complete the requirements to graduate from high school. So, we were hoping for three graduates, but we got two of them, and we will definitely make sure we get the other one by June of 2018. We definitely appreciate everyone's support and for coming out, and we tried to make today's graduation just as special and just as nice as the one that we do in June, even though it's not as many people and it's not the workforce center. Our staff, not just me, our staff really tried to go the extra mile to make it just as nice as the graduation in June. So, we're very proud of Edward Bonham and Ajene Purvis, and hopefully they're out celebrating tonight, and they do have plans going forward. They're not just graduating and not knowing what they're going to do. Edward is going to Advanced Technology Institute and Automotive Program, and Ajene is going to Paul D. Camp and the General Studies Program. She doesn't know what she wants to do yet, but she is registered to start classes in the fall at Paul D. Camp. So, thank you. Anything else, Ms. Sterling?
No, that was wonderful. Thank you so much. Next, I'd like to invite our HR director, Ms. Gail Wade. Please come out for the human resource update.
Okay. Good evening, school board, Ms. Sterling, and Franklin community. I would like to, can I?
Why are we talking now?
We'll start right at the beginning. Okay. I'm just going to give you a briefing of each school and go through some updates as we stand here in August 2017. In 2016-17, there were 39 teachers at Franklin High School. At the end of the year, 10 resigned, and we have hired nine of those back. We are still, have a vacancy in our alternative education program classroom. At JP King, last year, we had 29 teachers. Three resigned at the end of the year, and we have hired two back. You'll recall that one position at JP King was cut. So, they're fully staffed. S.P. Morton Elementary School, there were 55 teachers in the 16-17 school year. 19 resigned at the end of the year. We have hired 15 of those back. We still have a third grade reading vacancy, a fourth grade reading social studies, and a reading specialist vacancy. Now, I want to share with you some data regarding our teacher turnover. So, I've done that back for two years. So, in the 15-16 school year, the teacher turnover rate for the school division was 17.7%. And so, I have it broken down by school, how many teachers left at the end of the year, and the school turnover rate, but for the division, it was 17.7%, which was down. It was going on a downtrend for the last, or three prior years. Next slide, please. In this pie chart, you'll see showing where the majority of the teachers were, or what the percentage was, of turnover at each of our schools. You'll see S.P. Morton had 59% of the teachers who left. JP King had 14%, and Franklin High School, 27%. Okay? In 16-17, which is just this past school year that we have just ended, our teacher turnover rate was 26% for the school division. You'll see, I have it broken down by school, how many left and what the percentage at each school was, but for the school division, it was 26%. And that's the data that we really collect. In the next slide, again, the pie chart will show you that 60% was from S.P. Morton, 10% from JP King, and 30% from Franklin High School. So, the pie chart looks very similar, and I think that's a trend that is across the Commonwealth, that certainly is with colleagues that I speak with, the greatest turnover is always at the elementary school.
Do we know what the state averages are for turnover?
We can, we'll pull that data once that's reported, and that'll be reported out, and I'll be glad to share that with you, but we don't have that data yet because people are still collecting it. In this pie chart here, these are the reasons for leaving that were responses collected from written surveys. The written survey that was used is a consistent survey that's always used with our staff, and it came to us from the Virginia Department of Education, and it's used throughout the Commonwealth. So, the reasons that I have listed in that pie chart are the reasons that came directly off of the survey. So, you'll see there where the greatest percentage, what the reasons were while staff left. In addition to these 17 written surveys, I did conduct 22 face-to-face interviews, exit interviews with staff who, before they left at the end of the school year, and the anecdotal data that I collected was in line with the results of what they put in writing on their written survey. I do want to share with you our new administrators, Ms. Joan McCullough, Assistant Principal at S.P. Morton, Ms. Pamela Kindred, that should be Director of Financial Services, and I guess now I can formally introduce Mr. Dexter Warren, Assistant Principal at S.P. Morton.
And Anita.
And Anita Harris, our new Coordinator of People, Personnel, and Testings. Thank you, thank you, yes. I didn't put that on there and try to be premature, but that has just been approved by our board tonight. Okay, thank you very much.
Next, we'd like an update on the summer maintenance project. I'll meet Dan Custis. Thank you so much for coming back and sharing with us the updates from the QZ app and the maintenance. Please.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
We've completed seven out of our 16 big projects. The remaining ones are still on schedule. I'd like to report, oops, I'm sorry. Our annual boiler inspection was completed Wednesday. That's a pretty big thing because it can get quite expensive, and we had no discrepancies. So, we're certified for another year at all our schools. Also, this isn't on paper, we completed 114 maintenance requests since June 1st. This is stuff that's not even in our summer project stuff, so we've been quite busy this summer. Our roofing on the Charles Street Gym, it's supposed to start, I think it was a misprint, but it's 9/7/17s when we start. We're still on schedule to have that started. Like I said before, the brickwork's been all completed. That was done on, completed on 7/7/17. And our roof replacement for the girls locker room at Franklin High School, the start date's been moved back to the 1st of September, and it'll be completed probably with that week, so the 7th of September. We had to move it back because the same contractor's working on the inside, it's going to be doing, he's already, already doing something right now. As soon as he completes his project, the guy that's doing the roofing tiles at Franklin High School is the same contractor. Carpet cleaning at all the schools has been done. I'd say we're 95% done. The only thing we have to do yet is S.P. Morton, the modules, the hallways, we're having bathrooms rehived in there, so I, they're going to be bringing construction material in and out of there, so I wanted to make sure we didn't have to clean the carpets twice. So, I scheduled it for the last week before school starts. Still up to pressure wash the module, that's going to happen next week. Paint the walls and the ceiling tiles at the, I mean, the ceiling in the cafeteria at JP King, that's been done. I think we have a few pictures of that in there. You saw, they come after this. They did a very good job in there. I think we got a good deal out of that one, so it looks, it looks a whole lot, looks really nice in there. I was amazed at how much difference just changing the color made, and that was, the superintendent picked that color. I think she did good on that.
Thank you, Dan.
We replaced the steps at S.P. Morton, we have a picture of that. They've been replaced. The only thing we have to do yet is we're trying to figure out what kind of handrail we're going to put on there. Something's going to be a little more durable than the last one. We spent a lot of time fixing those. We painted the main hallway at Franklin High School. It's been completed. There's some pictures of that in there, one picture I know of in there. Painted the cafeteria at Franklin High School, that's completed. Looks very nice in there. And right now, the job's in process right now. I don't know if you did a walk-through Franklin High School, but we have some open ceilings in there. They're replacing the ceiling tiles right now. They'll be working this Friday and Saturday. These guys are pretty dedicated, have some pretty dedicated contractors coming in on the weekends and working, so our staff will make sure that they can get in and out and make sure everything gets done, anything they need. The curving's still on schedule. Resurface the stages, the dates have been moved back on that, 8/24 is the start date, and 8/25 is going to be the completion date, the three stages. And the preventive maintenance, that's on track. We've probably got halfway through half our equipment, or we have 624 pieces of equipment that we have to touch. So, I think we're halfway through that. Also, we saved $4,500 on these ceiling tiles, so that's QZ app money. I didn't get a chance to touch base with the superintendent on this, but I have a contractor looking at Charles Street Gym. We're going to replace the, try to fix the corners where it was leaking in there, and see if we can get that in with what the money we saved there, and we'll make a decision with her if we do that. I think I touched on everything, I believe.
Can we go back on?
Look how shiny that is.
There we go.
And that's with the old ceiling tiles in it.
Right. Can we go back a little bit to JPK, if you don't mind, the cafeteria?
That's what it looked like before. It was cracked, and all the plaster was coming down. They repaired all that and painted everything. Everything they could paint, they painted.
And if you could just freeze right there.
Look at that.
Beautiful.
They did, I was really pleased with the job that they did.
Great job.
If there's any questions, I'll answer.
I don't have a question, but I do have something to just share back with you. A few months back, I had the opportunity, and I bring this up because you're here, to have a conversation with someone from the local fire marshal's office.
Yes.
They had nothing but great things to say about you and your department.
Well, thank you, thank you.
So, I just wanted to be sure to share that with you.
Thank you. We've developed a very good relationship with him, and he knows that anything that comes up, we take care of right now.
He said you were Johnny-on-the-spot. Anything that he needed addressed, you were quick to address it.
Yeah, I know that's something that can shut you down quick, so we take that very serious. We take that very seriously.
On the carpet cleaning, did we contract that, or did our staff do?
Balanced, local, we contracted.
That's a really good price for all that carpet.
Yes, it is, and they, they're pretty competitive. I bid them out about three years ago because I thought it was a little high, and then I found out we were getting a pretty good deal, so I stuck with them. Anybody else?
Good job.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for everything. And we just want to go on record while Mr. Phelps is here. Mr. Phelps has worked with his seniors to paint the ceiling tiles with the schools that they have been accepted to, and we just want to make certain that we go on record and say that though the ceiling tiles will be replaced in Franklin High School, those ceiling tiles will not be removed, and we will continue to support that tradition that he has started at Franklin High School, and we appreciate that. So, I just want to make certain you know that.
Very nice, very nice.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to Mr. Whitey for operations.
Good evening, Chairman Hall, Vice Chairman Hall-Lenard, board members. Superintendent has asked that we get the greenhouse up and running, so I just wanted to give you a progress report because we're starting last week. Basically, I met with a local farmer, and we went in and looked at the greenhouse, see what the condition of it was. We have some pictures that I'll share as part of this presentation, and she, you know, we kind of figured out what kind of things we needed in there. And the first, the biggest issue with the greenhouse at this point is, it's too hot in the summer to grow anything, it's too cold in the winter to grow anything, so we're going to have to have some HVAC in there. So, at this point, I'm currently writing a grant for that through the Franklin Southampton Charities, and we're also, there's another grant through one of the agriculture companies, but they don't, that doesn't come out until January. So, we'll be working on those kind of things to hopefully get the HVAC done. The HVAC, once that is actually put in there, everything else will kind of fall into place. We'll be working with the ecology classes with the two new ecology teachers as part of the greenhouse. We will also have the Kone Arts Class in there working, and hopefully growing some herbs and things like that, and vegetables, and we'll also have the exceptional education classes with Ms. Turner will be also working in the greenhouse. And along with the nutritional services staff will also be assisting as part of the program. So, those are the, that's the program as we see it. The priorities, again, are the HVAC, repairing the building because in a lot of spots, the building is actually, there are holes in it, and I'm not sure if you can see from those pictures, but as close up, there's some spots in it where there's holes in there. Pretty much everything that's growing inside right now needs to stop growing. And so, we have to go in and clean those things out. We're going to have to schedule, schedule classes in there so everybody's sort of working together and making sure we get everything done in a timely manner. We're obviously going to have to get some supplies, seeds, and flats, and we do have some materials in there, but some of those things are not useful. That's our tree that we're growing inside. I don't know what it is, but it's got to come out. So, we got to obviously keep up the maintenance, set a maintenance schedule in there, and we're also looking to put a sprinkler system in so we don't necessarily have, for the days and things, you know, spring breaks and winter breaks and those kind of things that we can, the plants and fruits and vegetables will still be watered without us having to be there for that. So, those are the, that's the priorities on the greenhouse and the plan with that. Are there any questions about that?
How long has it been since we've used that as a greenhouse? Do you know?
Well, we sort of, we're still using it, but not to the level that we want to be using it.
Right, okay.
Right now, there's, there are planter boxes outside that there are, that some things have been planted in, but there's nothing inside, and I don't know when the last time we were inside. Huh? Okay. Yeah. I don't know when the la, it's been.
Three or four years ago, we, the church and us partnered together to get it going again, but mainly what we're using there are the planter boxes on the outside, and maybe just a few things, and so.
Right. Any other questions?
Okay. We're going to go ahead on and move right into our report on transportation. As you know, our school, the first day of school will be starting soon, and I want to make certain that you receive a report, a report on our transportation and if we're up and running and ready for day one. So, Mr. Whitey?
All right. On the transportation side, just in general, we have 20 buses. 15 of them are school buses. One, there's Stampede, there's two special ed buses, and we have two buses that are inoperable at this time. Both of them need an engine, and we have not replaced those at this point, and we probably won't. We have, if you go to the next slide, there are 17 for the actual school buses, we have 17 school buses, and the recommended time to replace these school buses is 15 years, and 53% of our operable school buses are over the operable recommendation. So, those are some things we need to take care of or look at as we go forward. All the buses will be cleaned and ready for the first day of school, and we will be, we will be able to transport all of our students for the first days of school. And with that, if you have any questions about the transportation.
Okay, thank you so much. Next, we'll have our director, Pam Kindred of Finances, to do the financial overview.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Included in your board packet, you'll see this information, and you guys have seen it before, but for the public, our operating budget is roughly $16.9 million, and you'll see included is a fund overview where it says that 82% of our funds are in the operate, in the general fund. Textbook fund, it says zero, but because of rounding, it's not, it's less than 1%. And then we have the cafeteria fund, which is at 5%. Grants fund is at 13%. And if you go to the next slide, you'll see our expanded operating fund expenditure classifications, and you'll see that 72% of our expenditures are in our instructional budget. And then I won't belabor you by reading the others, but it's broken out there for you. And thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay? In your packet, you will have information regarding the utilities. If you would go to the second slide. I have a trend analysis data for you, and what I did was, I looked at each of the schools, and I did it for all of the cycles, beginning with January 2015 through February 23rd, 2015. If you look at S.P. Morton, you'll see that the bill for them is $5,463.78. For JPK, it was $15,743.20. And then for Franklin High School, it was $9,513.1. And what I did for you, as I said, was to go through each of the cycles where we began to see a problem at JP King, so that you could see how each of the schools stacked up against each other for comparative purposes. If you could go to, keep going forward. Go, you go the other way, I'm sorry, the other up.
Forward.
Keep going, you can keep going. Keep going. Keep going, you can keep going. Right, go back to that slide. And what I did was, I outlined each, the school for you to see where they were, so you could see the trend in the cycle for each of the months with the beginning at, with, starting at the beginning of the year. So, if you see where we are, pretty much with S.P. Morton is kind of on average. There are no hikes or extreme changes in the bill. If you could go to the next slide. With JPK, you'll see the changes there. We went from $15,743.20 to $21,902.59, to $2,099.63, to $9,645.40, and then to $16,026.39. And we did, this evening, before the meeting began, I received the bill for 6/21 through 7/25, and for JP King, the new electric bill for the past cycle is $21,069.39. And for JP King, the new electric bill for the past cycle is $21,619.40. You can go to Franklin High School. And again, if we look at Franklin High School, it was pretty level in where we were with the electric bill. You can go to the last slide. So where we are in the process, the independent electrical monitoring company that we have, they're working, they're working very closely with us to provide the city with a report with all of this information. And they were awaiting this bill, but like I said, I just got that this evening. So I will get it to the maintenance department so that the electrical company can close out their reporting. And as soon as we receive any information as to next steps, that will be divulged to you.
Is that ABM that you're talking about?
Yes, sir. Are there any questions?
Does the city remotely read our meters or does someone come out and read them? Do you know?
I'm not exactly, I'm not exactly sure if they do come out and do that or if it's just reported through an electrical system. I could find that out and get back to you.
No, that's okay. JP King is just crazy.
Yes, sir.
No, I think we would like to, for you to get that information, get that.
Yes, ma'am, I can do that.
Now, and you said we just got the bill for this coming month and obviously by the figure that you gave us, it's high again.
Yes, ma'am.
How were the other two schools for this past month? Were they on trend with what they've been being?
Well, for SP Morton, the bill, the electrical bill, it was $8,457.93. And then for Franklin High School, it was $9,229.81.
And with it being summer, of course, we would expect some increase.
Yes.
So that's.
Ms. Kindred, can you please restate JP King's amount once again?
Oh, yes, ma'am. That was $21,619.40. And that was for the 621, 2007 through 725, 2017 cycle.
So that's like a 30-some percent increase.
Yeah.
There wasn't, was there summer school, like?
And JP King? Seven days.
It was a seven-day summer school, yes.
Chairman Hall, if you look at your dates, it's an extended period. It's not your normal 30-day period. It's 621 to 725. So there's extra days in there.
Okay.
Which may attribute somewhat to the billing, just making an observation.
That's a good point. Thank you, Mr. Williams. Thank you, Pam.
Yes, if I may, it's not included on here, but you guys had presented some questions to me and I just wanted to give you answers to those if I could. You all were asking about the Verizon Wireless Bill and the Verizon Business and also the Charter Bill. The Verizon Wireless is for cell phones and Wi-Fi hotspots. The Verizon Business is for regular telephone lines at JPK, Franklin High School, SP Morton. It also encompasses fax lines, the fire alarm, security system, and backup and emergency lines. And the Charter Bill, well Charter Serv, the service provider provides us with internet access and the phone trunk line for central office and outbound calling at schools. And you all also had a question for me in regards to the SunTrust Equipment Finance and Leasing Bill that we pay, and that is for the ABM projects that we have. And if you would like, I can supply you with the scope of work. And that is all. If you don't have any questions for me.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you so much, Ms. Kindred. Very comprehensive. Thank you. Ms. Conaway, will you please come up? We would like to invite you to provide us information about the federal programs.
Good evening.
Mr. Hall.
Dr. Hall, Leonard, school board members, Mr. Williams, Ms. Sterling. Tonight, I want to give you a brief overview of our federal programs, grants. And you have seen this information before, but the difference is tonight, I did write out for you. And also, you have a folder in front of you, a manila folder with the information that I'm going to share with you there. And in addition to that, you will see the red printing where it explains what your grants actually are. So the purpose of each of the grants, I'm going to go over those now. For Title 1, 1003G, which is our federal funding program to support school improvement at SP 1 Elementary School. Title 1 Part A, what it does, it supports, it supports programs for school divisions with a high number or high percentages of students from low-income families. And it's to help them to meet the state academic standards as other students will try to meet them. And that's for SP Morton and JP King. We have Title 2 Part A, that's our federal grant that provide activities to strengthen our leadership, our administrators, as well as provide high-quality teachers to support our students at each of our schools. So that's Franklin High School, SP 1, and JP King. Then we have Title 3. Title 3, Support Our English Learners. Currently, we have about 13 English language learners. And that money is used to support their language proficiency and their academic achievement as well as to support the teacher to improve her skills to help our students. And we use that money for all three schools. Title 5, which was formerly Title 6B, and that's our money to support rural schools with a high concentration of students from low-income families. And that's for all three schools. And then we have our Carl Perkins Funding, and that's support our career and technical education programs. And it also, and it's the academic achievement of those students as well as to strengthen the connection of secondary and post-secondary education and improve state and federal accountability in our CTE programs. So those are six grants that we're speaking of tonight. And the next slide, I'm going to ask you to focus on the Excel spreadsheet that you have at your desk. You're going too far. You don't have that, Ms. Williams. You can just bring it back. Right, thank you. Okay, on your spreadsheet, if you notice in red, I highlighted what each grant represent. And that's what I would do each month when I present to you so you can have an idea when you take this with you, you still know what they're representing. And what I'm going to do tonight is just talk about our projections. The rest of the information you can kind of focus on yourself. But for Title 6B, which is now Title 5 Rural Ed Low Income, which is the first grant you see there, but it's the bottom line where it says Fund 61. We, it's programmatically approved that grant is, but we're waiting for our money released. So we don't know the allocation right now. When I did the grant, I used last year's figures because that's what DOE recommends. Next, you will see the Career and Technical Education Funding for projected 1718. We actually, it's no longer a projection. The grant has been approved. We have been awarded the money. Finance Department has the money. We have given $40,687.34. Currently, we only get 30% of it right now. Until October 1st, we get the remaining 70%. For Fund 15, where you see Title 1, 1003G. For 2017, we submitted the grant on August the 11th. We requested, this is not on your paper, but I thought I shared with you anyway. We requested $217,717. And it does look like we are going to get it. We had a few corrections to make on the grant and we submitted those today.
Excuse me, would you repeat that?
Okay, we had a good amount.
Yes. Thank you.
It's a rounded figure, but that's what we requested. And most of that goes to pay for our lead turnaround partner, which is Catapult. So that's where the bulk of that money is going. Fund 15, you see Title 1 Part A for 2017. The projection that we're supposed to get is $816,518. And we're waiting for the approval. We should know it's around October, whether we, how much money we're receiving for that, to be exact. Fund 23, which is the bottom line, the very last line on your first page, is Title 2 Part A. The projection for 1718 is $93,976.29. We're waiting on the approval. That also comes with Title 1 in October. And then on your second page, that's Title 3 Part A, which is the funding source with the question mark you see there for 2017. We're waiting to release and the approval of that grant. We are in a consortium with Virginia Tech and school divisions that receive under $10,000. So we're in the consortium Title 3 Grant as opposed to a standalone grant. So when Virginia Tech receive their funding and approve, then we'll receive our portion that the consortium receives. And so usually, we are at the, like a thousand dollars. That's what we usually get. But I don't know what it's going to be this year. So that's the projection for 1718 for the federal grants allocation. And that's the explanation of each of them represent. Questions?
Not a question, a comment?
Yes.
Mrs. Conaway?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Conaway?
Ms. Conaway.
Okay. I just want to say thank you.
You're welcome.
For the format and under purpose, you go, you went back here and it's really helping the board.
Okay.
Because a lot of times you all talk about these different funds and you know what they are. The Title 1, Title 2, Part A, federal funds. But to actually have it in this format, so when we're looking at your spreadsheet, you know, if we have not memorized these grants, funds, and awards, we can go back and reference it.
Okay.
Thank you so much for the simplicity. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Next, I'd like to move into the Special Education Annual Plan Update. Ms. Hamilton Vaughn and Ms. Kindred will accompany her. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
In your board packet, you will find information regarding the maintenance of effort that we provided for you as a comprehensive report so that you will have information as we delve into our maintenance of effort at our called work session meeting on the, I'm sorry, what's the date? The 3rd.
The 3rd.
On September the 3rd.
Sorry about that.
Are there any questions about the information that we have provided for you?
For our community, could you tell us what maintenance of effort? Because you have educated us.
The maintenance of effort, what it is, is that the Virginia Department of Education is required by federal regulation to ensure all school divisions in Virginia comply with 300.203 of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, which mandates that school divisions meet a maintenance of effort obligation. Are there any questions, other questions?
Well, before you all leave, I just want to say thank you, Mrs. Kindred, but thank you to Mrs. Howardton Vaughn. Don't know how many years it's been. You've been commuting, seven years commuting to Franklin City. We appreciate your diligence, your perseverance, the work that you've done in Franklin City Public Schools.
Thank you so much. It has been a pleasure and an honor. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we'll have an instructional update from Ms. Conaway.
It's not in there if you're looking for an instructional update.
Oh, correct, yes, I do. Right there. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Okay, all right. So we're going to share with you preliminary SOL results. We're excited. And so we're going to start with SP 1 Elementary School. We, with our SOL results, we look at four reporting categories. And that's English, Math, History, and Science. But at the high school, we also look at graduation rate, so they have a fifth category. So tonight, at SP 1, we can see that we made benchmark accreditation in Math and History. For 2017, we got 77% in Math and 97% in History. Science, we, we missed it by just a margin, just one percentage point at 69%. And in English, we got 7, 67%. We increased by 1%, but we're working on both of those areas. And Ms. Dr. Davis and her team, they have a huge plan for English. They have got together, they've been working very hard this summer. They have revised their curriculum. And I think they're on a good path, especially with Ms. Sterling's leadership. I think we're going to be okay because we do have a plan in place to help us get to where we need to be. For JP King, this is our great news, our wonderful news. And if you look on the right-hand column of that chart, you see four yeses. We have been trying to do this for five years and we're there.
Yes, yes.
We're excited. So that's great news for us there. So I won't go through each of their scores, but we're excited to have those four yeses in that column. Franklin High School, again, we have four yeses. Congratulations. We know our math is our area that we use our three-year average. Who's rearranged math department. He's going back to what we used to do. Algebra 1, Geometry, Algebra 2. He has put his students who he think are the students who need more support during the first semester of taking an Algebra 1 class or in case they need to retake that Algebra 1 class second semester. So he made sure he, they scheduled properly for that. So he's, and he has some good people in place to work his math department. So we have a plan for that as well. So we're going, we're moving up and we're going to continue to go up. I'm sorry. And so that's what, and if our Virginia quality profile came out on Monday and it said we're 67%, that's on the face of the quality profile. But when you click on the schools, they did not update that information. So if you read something in the paper, we are, JP King is accredited, okay? So that, Mrs. Phelps contacted DOE and we have that information verified by them. So both schools are accredited, okay?
One of the things, I want to thank you so much for reporting on our SOL data. I want to go back to SP Morton. One of the things we don't see is we're looking at the average of what 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade did overall. And as you can see, the data at SP Morton is trending upwards. So there are going to be exceptional things happening. But I do want to comment that our rising 5th graders going to 6th grade are going with an average of 78% on target in reading and in math. And the work that Dr. Davis is doing has allowed JP King to have a pre-algebra course identified for 6th grade students. So we need to give a round of applause for how you're proclaiming the students at the elementary level. So yes, they, we're moving definitely in the right direction. Thank you.
And for our stakeholders, this, we got to say preliminary.
And this is preliminary.
We want to confirm that, but it is preliminary.
It's preliminary, it is.
Yes, and VDOE has confirmed that it will be out on September 13th. And when you check on the profiles, we will be updated at that time. So thank you for that, Board Member.
All right. Thank you so much.
There's no doubt in my mind that this time next year, all three will be accredited.
Thank you.
Right, Ms. Sterling?
Yes. I have submitted also the professional development log for your review as well as the MOU updates. And if there are no further questions, that concludes. And if there are no further questions, that concludes the superintendent's update.
Ms. Sterling, I did have a question for the professional development log. And I think it's just that I needed clarity, trying to find it. This is it, and it's on here, I think, several times. Advancement VIA Individual Determination Summer Institute.
Avid.
Okay.
Yes. That's avid.
I was trying to figure, I said, what is this? Thank you so much.
Yes, not a problem.
What is that?
Thank you, Ms. Sterling.
Yes, sir.
Under Item Five, Unfinished Business, five point one, First Reading Policy GCQA, Non-school Employment by Staff Members. I've looked at the policy. It's been revised extensively. It's very well done. Do you have anything to add, Ms. Sterling, or anyone?
No, one of the things that we did not have, and with the leadership of Ms. Wade, she developed a form, so the teachers or any personnel that has a secondary employment, that has secondary employment can fill that out, just so we will be on notice. So it really does take it to the next level of professionalism, and we do appreciate the work that she's doing. And it is revised extensively, but I think it captures the spirit of what the board's intent was when they asked us to look at the policy.
I think so. Good job. Thank you. So we'll have our final reading next month on this. Policy five point two, IGAB, Advanced Placement and Dual Enrollment Courses. Do you have comments, Ms. Sterling?
Before you, you have highlights of the Advanced Placement and Dual Enrollment Courses. And in the spirit of transparency and collaboration, at this time, the community can take a survey that is located on our website for the dual enrollment, so they can weigh in on changes before we make changes to the dual enrollment policy. We reviewed it, and we should have the results on August thirty-first to discuss during our next meeting.
Okay.
The final revision.
Any discussion on that? Five point three, Policy BHD, School Board Member Compensation and Benefits. We have those in our packet. It lists the salaries of the chairman and school board members. Any discussion on that?
No, but I believe, Mr. Chairman, if you can correct me if I'm wrong, we need a motion. This was the final reading, am I correct? Mrs. Sterling?
Yes.
This was the final reading on this, on the revision, so I believe we would need a motion.
I totally agree.
Okay.
So, do we have a motion to approve school board member compensation and benefit?
I make a motion to approve the school board member compensation and benefits, which is file BHD.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose no. Motion carries. Thank you. Under New Business, SunTrust Unincorporated Organization Certificate of Authority. I believe that's a check signature document. Is that correct?
That is so we can be issued a credit card for the, for the division in the names of myself, Ms. Kendrick, and Julia Bradshaw. At this time, our credit card had no name. It just said Franklin City Public Schools. So they stopped those, and we have to have them reissued. And this is definitely for accountability purposes.
Do we have a motion to approve the SunTrust Certificate of Authority?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the SunTrust Un, let me see, Unincorporated?
Unincorporated.
Un, if I spell correctly, okay. SunTrust Unincorporated Organization Certificate of Authority.
Thank you. A second?
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose no. Motion carries. Lowe's Beautification Grant. That's, I believe that's at SP Morton, correct?
Yes.
Any comment on that, Ms. Sterling?
We have a Lowe's Beautification Grant that we were awarded back in May. It was through the Boys and Girls Club. At this time, for more information, I'd like to call Dr. Davis up, if you don't mind. So please give us some more detailed information about that partnership and that grant that was received. Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry for my voice. I'm hoarse. I was screaming with the children today. The Lowe's project was done through Boys and Girls Club. Boys and Girls Club is a partnership. They are in my building. They're housed there after school. Mr. Taylor, who is the coordinator for Boys and Girls Club in my building, came to me with the Hero Project. That's what Lowe's does. They normally do it in the Emporia area, but they wanted to bring it to Franklin. So they approached him with this idea. He then came to me and asked me, what can I do to support SP Morton for reading? So we came together, and there is a patio, which it says Stop, Drop, and Read, which is another area where students can go outside of the classroom and read. And the teachers can go outside, take their students out there. They can read. Also, community members can come in to read to students as well. And we always do a big Dr. Seuss thing, so we was going to also think about taking that partially outside. We normally do it in the building where everyone come. They dress up and go to the classrooms. But we were going to give that as an opportunity for students to go out to read, community members, even the parents to come out to read with their children outside. So it's a different area, and we want to try to get the students excited about reading and read something that they want to read, so there'll be something like a choice for them. And with us building their flex time in our schedule, there'll be an opportunity for them to go outside to read their favorite book, whether it be with a librarian, their teacher, a parent volunteer, a community member. So that was their contribution to SP Morton, a drop, a Stop, Drop, and Read patio where students can sit down and spread.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to receive the Lowe's Beautification Grant as presented.
Second?
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to receive the grant signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries. Six point three, Supplements. We had some discussion on this at our work session. We have revised, or it has been suggested, we revise our supplements. Any comment, Ms. Sterling?
The revision was put in place for the Elementary Honor Society sponsor, and we will be having courses, golf, and cross-country, so yes. The revisions were made.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the stipend adjustments?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the supplements as presented in our board materials.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve the supplements in the board materials signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries. Business by School Board Members. Anyone? We have a lot going on next week. Teachers coming back, convocation.
I'd just like to say to the superintendent, deputy superintendent, and the staff, and everybody worked so diligently on the new teacher orientation this week. And it was an excellent teacher luncheon, well put together. The food was delicious. The restaurant, the food was delicious, but it seems like all the teachers are eager to be here, glad to be here, and in the ground running. So I'd like to say congratulations to you all on your teacher orientation and the luncheon. Very nice. Also, the welcoming reception. You want to elaborate?
Yeah, that was, we did that for Ms. Sterling. It was a small one. We will do a larger one at some point, but.
This is fine.
It was right out in the lobby, and we enjoyed it, and the cake was good.
That was good.
We want to welcome you again, so.
Thank you.
Ms. Sterling's only been here two months, but she's made quite an impact, so.
And the last thing I would like to say, recently, I had the opportunity to attend a conference on mental health in schools to just say that, you know, as we get ready to embark upon a new school year, oftentimes, we have hearing screenings, vision screenings, you may have speech, language screenings. But we, there's a lot going on with some of our students, so we do want to be mindful. We technically, you know, I don't think there's probably, and it may be, an assessment for mental health. But we want to be aware, make sure that we are aware, our staff, administrators, teachers are aware, and come to the aid of those students. Some of those students may not be an exceptional ed student. They may not be receiving special education services. But it doesn't mean that they won't need some extra nurturing, compassion shown, especially to some of our students who may be displaced, who may be moving from place to place, and they may say, I'm living with this relative, that relative, well, that's actually homeless. And so we want to be sensitive to all of those things as we embark upon a new school year.
Thank you, Dr. Hall Leonard. Anybody else? Hearing none, is there a motion for adjournment?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to motion that we adjourn.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, we're adjourned.